Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two B is a motion to approve the purchase of seven 2018 Ford utility interceptors off the 2018 city of Sioux Falls bid number eighteen dash zero zero two-two from Nelson's Sent Auto Center, Fergus Falls, Minnesota, at a cost of the total of two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and four dollars and eleven cents, non pro tonk, to March twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of seven hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. Is there a-
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and second. Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is a Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for June two thousand eighteen, and that is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
The motion and a second. All, any questions on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is, or letter B, is recognize significant employee anniversaries for August two thousand eighteen. Jen, good morning.
Good morning. Jen Addix from Human Resources. We have a bunch of anniversaries this month. With five years of service, we've got Justin A. Brewer, Julia Disberg, Mackenzie Sweet Allen, and Maria Lopez, celebrating ten years. We have Patricia Allen, Sophia Godey, Marlon Schlinker, and Karen Wheeldryer, and Marty Dargan. And then with fifteen years of service, we've got Krista Leitholt, Jackie Rasmussen, and Steve Punkey. So we just want to take an opportunity to thank them for all their service.
Okay. Thank you. That's quite the list of them. Item number, item, letter C is record violent volunteers in the county departments for July two thousand eighteen.
Another great month of volunteers. We have two hundred and eighty-eight volunteers that gave their time across many different departments within the county, the museum, State's Attorney's Office, public defenders, JDC, emergency management, jail, and safe home. So again, thank you to them for all of their volunteer work that they do here at the county.
Yeah, thank you. Letter D is a special commission action to approve the hire of Thomas Nelson as senior deputy state's attorney for the state's attorney's office.
The state's attorney is requested to hire Tom Nelson, two steps above the hiring range for the position. Tom comes to us with thirteen, almost thirteen years of experience as an assistant county attorney at Potawatomi County, which is one of our comparable counties. So he's coming in with directly relevant experience. Additionally, you all know what difficulties we have in recruiting attorneys and all of our different departments. So that's the reason for the request.
Questions?
Approval.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Letter E, special commission action to approve a temporary pay increase of approximately five percent for secretary of the highway department.
Yes, our current administrative secretary at the highway department has been filling in for the accountant who left the position on July sixteenth, and it is a six pay grade difference. So given the higher level responsibilities that she's assumed, we'd ask for this five percent temporary increase until that accountant vacancy is refilled.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, before Jen leaves us, Jen, do we publish the list of volunteers and stuff? We could have thrown it up on the screen as well, but when we do our minutes, do we publish that list? Is that something we should consider? We can discuss it later, but I just wanted to ask.
Thank you.
If I could too, just, when I look at that list of volunteers, the family names, a lot of families that volunteer together, husbands, wives, children, parents, so it's, you know, just a great, great way to do service for our county, public service, and it's just so nice to see that list that way. And just want to thank people for volunteering.
I would assume that they are in our white notebook if somebody in the audience wanted to look at them, or if somebody was ever curious. We do print them for their, I don't, we don't print them in the paper, correct? Correct at this point.
If I may, then Olivia, is that a policy, or is that just not required? Is that the story, or?
Right. It's, the minutes are meant to record actions taken.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for a compromise of lien. Letter A is DPNO number four zero seven two two-two in the amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning. Melinda Storely, Commission Assistant. DPNO four oh seven two-two in the amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents represents poor relief recorded from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and three. The petitioner is selling his home and is expected to close on September fourteenth. He was unaware that his ex-wife had accrued this, these lien fees, and they were married on November two thousand eight and then divorced on April two thousand thirteen. The property, RDID three 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 eight four, was listed in both of their names, but was transferred from the leany to the petitioner by quitclaim deed on October twenty thirteen. The petitioner is requesting that the commission release the lien with no payment, only insofar as the real property legally described as lots three and four, block two, are Gibbons addition to city of Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Melinda. Any questions for Melinda? Is the petitioner here?
No.
No. So commission action.
Question for the state's attorney. Even if the liens were from before the marriage, you assume those debts when you get married, isn't that the way it is?
Commissioner, Madam Chair? Commissioner, so the statute in question does provide for liens to apply to spouses under twenty-eight fourteen six. However, the statute provides that if the poor person receiving benefits from the county is married, so I believe that the statute implies that at the time of the marriage, if the lien is established and poor relief paid, then that triggers the application to the spouse. So there's this specific statutory reference, I believe, covers the situation because the poor relief here was paid before they were married. And so the, with the language of the statute being very clear that because of the fact that the poor relief was paid when this individual wasn't married, I believe that warrants the commission taking discretionary review under the other statutes that we've talked about before.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
So, in doing the quitclaim, though, couldn't that be construed as just a way of, of ducking that, that loan, a subterfuge to prevent that from being collected at the time of the sale?
Absolutely. And I think that is why there's a statutory provision in place since nineteen thirty-nine and amended thereafter to apply a lien to a spouse of a recipient of the poor relief, to prevent that very situation where an individual divests themselves of assets in order to avoid the lien. And of course, if these individuals were married at the time that the poor relief were paid, then that would be an issue for your review, which would bring in application to this individual spouse, albeit an ex-spouse now, who retained the marital asset. But in this situation, because of the fact that the, that the poor relief was paid prior to the time of the marriage, I think twenty-eight fourteen six is in application because of the fact that they weren't married when the poor relief was gained.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, question, Karski?
I'm in favor of compromising this lien. I mean, it happened nine years before they were married. I don't, do you do a credit check, a prenup, and a check the courthouse for liens before you marry somebody? You know, it, it just doesn't make sense. So just based on that, it just makes sense to keep the lien on the individual. And, yeah, maybe the next person she marries should do a credit check. I don't know, but it, it's sad that we have to go to that, that length to do that. But I'm, I'm in favor of compromising this lien.
Commissioner Bender.
I'm also in favor of compromising the lien, but more along the lines of the statutory authority that was provided by the state's attorney's office, that the lien really never properly applied to the subsequent spouse, that because the lien was in place prior to they got, prior to this marriage. And so I would make a motion to compromise the lien and leave it on the individual.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, and we need roll call vote, please. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Letter B is DPNO number eight one six five in the amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and five cents. Melinda?
In this lien, the fees recorded from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen fifty-six were released per South Dakota codified law twenty-eight fourteen twenty. Those are liens before nineteen seventy. The fees recorded from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-three were not specifically identified as liens which represent mental health institutions, but they are known to represent institutions that sent billings for mental health service. The petitioner has explained that the woman in this lien is his aunt. She resided in an institution most of her life and deceased on December two thousand three. The male listed in the lien is his father and guardian of the woman who was his sister. He deceased October two thousand ten. A lien was, was enforced against the parents' home, RDID three seven three nine three, but the home has recently sold without interfering with the closing process and has transferred to a new buyer on August second, two thousand eighteen. The sale of the home was necessary in order to provide funds for the nursing home where his mother is currently residing. The petitioner is requesting release of the lien in full with no payment because both members listed on the lien are deceased, and there is no longer a property attached to the lien.
Questions for Melinda? Is the petitioner here?
No, I don't believe so.
Let me make a motion to release this lien in full without payment.
Second. A motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak about something that is not on today's agenda. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm sorry to be standing here wearing a coat and tie because I ought to be wearing my Sioux Empire Fair t-shirt and my Sioux Empire Fair hat, but I've got another event to go to after this. So those of you out in TV land that happen to be watching today, August seventh, when we're done, when you're done watching this show, put on your t-shirt, go to the Sioux Empire Fair, buy some food, ride some rides, look at the animals, meet some new people, make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That was your commercial for the fair for today. Thanks, Jeff. You forgot to say the concert tonight. The concert tonight will be great. Weather's beautiful. Thanks, Jeff. If there are no more public comments, we'll move on to regular business. Item number ten is authorize the chair to sign the amendment, the amended contract reflecting the jail expansion guaranteed maximum price. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Last week, he received a briefing about the amended contract, which, for the GMP, the gross maximum price. So we know that we've been working for a very long time with our vendors on, and professionals on getting that done. The dollar amount of the construction is forty million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand and eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. That is the construction, and that is the contract that you're amending today. The total cost is for forty-eight point three, which includes a generous contingency for the, for the county, along with the soft costs, and then the fixtures, furnitures, and equipment. I'm going to turn this over to Dick Strasberg with Tegra, who's been serving as our owners' rep. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Good morning, Dick Strasberg, Tegra Group, owners' rep for the county. So today we're looking at this, this amendment. And again, what this is, this is, this is this price of forty million, six eighty-three, eight thirty-five is the guaranteed maximum price that we would pay J.E. Dunn, Henry Carlson, J.E. Dunn, joint venture, for everything that's on the plans and specifications that are included in this. So what we're asking is that this, this be approved. And I think it's important to know that what we're buying is what's on the plans and specifications. When we change that for cost reductions or cost additions, then that is a change order. So for example, when we pull it down, for this morning, we, we discussed the, the brands of the toilets in the, in the cell units, for example. There's an opportunity to potentially save money on that, so we're looking at it. So that's just an example. So we've, you approve it now, but it means that we are still looking for every opportunity that we can to, to save money on it. So we've got representatives here from J.E. Dunn and Henry Carlson, too, if you, if you have questions.
Okay. Thanks, Dick. Are there any questions for Dick or for anyone on the team? Commissioner Bender?
I don't really have a question. I just would like to thank the entire team. We have representatives from our architectural team here today, too. And it has been, it's been a long process, but it's been a good team to work with, and I really appreciate everybody's effort and amount of hours that have gone into this. I would really like to just emphasize that, you know, we've been, before this commission, this is the third time now, and that these numbers, while we've, we've worked hard on them, you know, really, we've got, we're coming forward with a GMP that's lower than we had presented either in October or January. We've got our owners' contingency number up, back up slightly even higher than we had originally shot for, and we've got our FFNE budget back. So I feel really good about where we are, you know. The hard work starts and all the shovels hit the ground, and, you know, they're going to be, we're going to ask for some grace from all the employees of Minnehaha County and the people who are coming to our campus because parking's going to be tight. But we've, you know, worked hard on a parking plan, and I think that we have, I think we've got spots for people, but it might not, you might have to hunt peck a little bit more than you did before. But I would recommend, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this contract. I am going to ask that we approve the contract, but eliminate page one of exhibit B, which was really a summary page, and there's been a little, it's a little bit confusing. So since it was only designed to be a summary page, and it's not really helping us focus more carefully on it, the word, all the detail of the contract is correct in exhibit B behind that. So I'd make a motion to approve the GMP contract by, and eliminate page one of exhibit B.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments?
Well, I think, I would just like to thank both Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Barth for their extra work because both of them were on that committee since day one. And I know how many meetings you have been to and how much time and energy that you've put into this. So thank you for your leadership.
And there was no ask-
No other place I could learn about toilets than at jail.
Commissioners aren't paid to do the big, well, we are paid to do the big jobs. The salary definitely does not meet the kind of costs and time that you guys have put in to building this jail and, or getting, going forward. So, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. If there are no additional comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Start digging. Item number eleven is a public hearing and second reading of the wheel tax refund ordinance. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. During the last legislative session, the legislature amended SDCL thirty-five dash five dash twenty-four, which authorizes county treasurers to refund a motor vehicle license fee for an overpayment or when any motor vehicle license was paid in error. Minnehaha County has a wheel tax. We collect four dollars per vehicle wheel, not to exceed sixteen dollars per vehicle, as defined in ordinance MC nineteen dash ninety-one. The proposed change to the wheel tax ordinance authorizes the Minnehaha County Treasurer to refund the wheel tax as defined by South Dakota law. For reference, SDCL thirty-two dash five dash twenty-four states that any application for refund shall be made within ninety days from purchase, and the registration and stickers are returned unused. Chairman, would you like me to read the ordinance?
You can read the ordinance.
Through. It's, it is a short one.
It is short. I was like, how long is this?
If the treasurer refunds motor vehicle license fees to the lawful owner pursuant to and in accordance with SDCL thirty-two dash five dash twenty-four, the treasurer shall also refund to the lawful owner any wheel tax that was simultaneously overpaid or erroneously paid. The treasurer shall seek reimbursement from a municipality or ownership of the share of the entity refunded to the lawful owner of the motor vehicle.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for Carol? If we need a-
Approval of this ordinance change and a comment.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Comment by Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, as you know, these refunds have been somewhat controversial over the last many years. And there are so many different ways that people pay the, the wrong amount. We had one where they had five properties and unknown to the wife, the husband had already paid for three of them, so she sent in the wrong amount. And then we had people getting, renewing vehicles that they didn't own anymore accidentally, et cetera. I'm, I'm very glad that the legislature changed this, and I'm looking forward to an end to these issues as they've sometimes come up to us.
All right. This is a public hearing, and so I, before we get a motion, is there anyone who wants to speak on this change of ordinance? Okay. Then I would look for a motion. If there's no additional comments. Okay. A motion.
Make a motion to approve the wheel tax refund ordinance?
Second.
Any other comments? We need a roll call vote. Commissioner, or, excuse me. Okay. We need a roll call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is consider a motion to appoint three candidates to the Minnehaha County two thousand eighteen tax deed surplus property appraisal board.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. And as, is our annual task, we are once again going to have a tax deed sale, the last part of September. And in order to do that, we need to appoint three appraisers. And the ones, the folks that I've called that have agreed to do it, number one, Ken McFarland, number two, Kyle Helseth, and number three, Dick Calamine. And I'm sure you'll agree that all of them know the county's business and would be qualified to do this job. So I'm asking that you accept their names to be appointed to the surplus appraisal board.
Questions for Bob?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
I can't imagine that there are three guys, or people more competent than these three to serve in this role.
I don't know if I'd want them pulling up in my yard, but there they go.
We have a motion and a second. I need another roll call vote, please. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign agreements between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Transportation for funding a corridor study of the Maple Park Street area. DJ, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Well, we've talked about the Maple Street and Park Street corridor for quite some time. Most of it has been kind of about problems or, or concerns that we've heard about from residents and, and Split Rock Township. We take traffic counts pretty regularly out there. Right now, it's between six hundred and seven hundred per day is typically what we're seeing, which is quite a bit for a gravel road. We began having some discussions with the state of South Dakota, the Department of Transportation, about the possibility of doing a corridor study along this corridor to identify what the improvements would look like for this corridor, when, when the perform, or when the improvements are completed. Right now, we don't have any money planned in the budget necessarily for next year and anything like that for making any kind of improvements. But this study will look at what we look at when we start designing this project here in the next five years, more than likely. The, the corridor planning study will focus on, on data gathering, traffic forecasting, operations analysis, crash history, safety analysis, coordination with the various stakeholders. There's a lot of different government agencies that are involved, and residents and landowners, roadway alternatives for looking at different sections, different road designs, right-of-way needs for those different alternatives, and making presentations of a final report and recommendations. So in, in coordination with the Department of Transportation, they were able to identify some federal funding that can be used for completing this type of study. This study is about a hundred and ten thousand dollar effort, and so the federal funds identified will pay for eighty-one point nine five percent of this study. The county would then be responsible for eighteen point zero five percent of it. Because we've been working heavily with the MPO on this project, the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Brandon have both graciously agreed to pay basically equal thirds of that eighteen percent. And so when we initially started talking about the project, we thought it was going to be a hundred thousand dollar maximum. City of Brandon agreed to pay a third of eighteen thousand dollars or so at that time. City of Sioux Falls is agreeing to pay for it, a third of the hundred and ten thousand dollars that we ended up negotiating with the consultant. And then the Minnehaha County will be responsible for the remaining six to eight thousand dollars, more than likely. So today, we have an agreement with the state of South Dakota agreeing to move forward with the project. We would request your approval on that. And, and that will set the ball in motion for work order between the state of South Dakota and HDR Engineering to complete the work. In the future, probably next week or the next two weeks, I will also have two agreements, one of them with the city of Sioux Falls and one of them with the city of Brandon, funding agreements to pay their portion of the third. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Bender?
Honestly, this is more of a comment probably than a question, but I just was so encouraged by the amount of collaboration that's going into this project. And, you know, this is the east-west road directly north of my house. I'm really very familiar with this. And, you know, it's been amazing to me to see how Veterans Parkway has changed traffic patterns out in this area. And, you know, to see that kind of traffic count on that road is pretty amazing because there are lots of times of the year where that road is really difficult to navigate. And so, I mean, this will be a game changer for the city of Brandon and for the whole development of the eastern side of Sioux Falls. And so I'm, I'm really encouraged that everybody recognizes that. I mean, it's not going to be an easy, easy project. No doubt, it won't be a cheap project at the end of the day, but it's a really important project. So I'm very, I'm really thankful for you, your leadership of it and for getting, for the amount of collaboration that's going on. So.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Bender. Commissioner Barth?
I appreciate those comments as well. Superintendent Booth, so when the asphalt hits the ground, are, are we doing it, or is it the state DOT, or Sioux Falls City, or the federal government, or?
Commissioner, the best answer right now is, is probably we don't know. I could certainly speculate. Right now, the majority of that section of roadway is, is under the jurisdiction of the township. And, and typically, the township won't develop a road such as this. And so that section of roadway would more than likely fall under the county's jurisdiction when it's due to be reconstructed. There is a section that is within the city limits of Brandon. They, of course, would be responsible for their own section. And then there's a section that's inside the city of Sioux Falls already. So the city of Sioux Falls would be responsible for that section.
Commissioner Barth?
So part of the process is Split Rock would have to ask us to do it, and then it would go to the DOT and then come to us?
That's correct. Yeah.
Split Rock does have a million bucks in the bank.
We'll try to negotiate something.
You got some time. You had to figure out how that's going to happen. Any additional questions? Look for a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen is a brief presentation by highway civil engineer interns on the culvert, culvert data collection for the highway department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. We made a presentation to the GIS Committee, and Carol Muller thought it would be good for you guys all to see what's going on with our interns. It is about culverts. Trish, we're going to use this little device here, if you could get that set up. So with me today is our two college interns. They're soon to be going back to school. Andrew Unt is a hard rocker and will be a sophomore out at School of Mines. Jacob Simansky is a cornhusker and will be a junior at the University of Nebraska. And they're both from Sioux Falls, so they had a nice summer here staying with their families. Andrew and Jacob will- Andrew and Jacob will provide this presentation about the collection of the culvert inventory using an iPad and an app called Collector. The GIS department was very gracious with their time and instructions in helping us get together with the iPad and the Collector app and the GIS database, and we're thankful for their assistance. And just to let you know, there'll be a very short briefing, probably more like a memorandum, not necessarily a full agenda item. Yet to be seen. Anyway, about the culvert data itself, how many we have, what condition they're in, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a coming attraction. So without further ado, here is Andrew and Jacob.
Good morning, gentlemen. If you would identify yourself and give your address, maybe they already told you that.
My name is Jake Samansky. I am the two thousand and eighteen summer intern, forty-eight oh fifty, two hundred and seventy Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So like Shannon said, we are the two thousand and eighteen interns. We were hired this summer to do a culvert inspection and inventory of about two thousand mainline culverts over about three hundred and forty-seven miles of county highway. The county requires this to be done once every three years, so this is the third time they're doing it. And again, like Shannon said, we're here to just kind of demonstrate the technology we used and give an overview of what we have done this summer. And it's an app, an iPad app called Collector. We can use it to take pictures, track our GPS location where the other culvert locations are, and record the state of the culverts as we see fit. So it's on a scale from one to five, one being an excellent culvert, five being failed, and then everything in between. So I'll let Andrew talk a little bit more about the app itself.
Hello, Andrew Unt, seventy-one-ten West Solbrook Trail, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I am also a summer intern. As you can see here, there's a bunch of marks. That is every culvert in the county. And so we had to look at each one of those, well, two thousand of them. And we can look at a culvert, City of Brandon, and you can see information about it. You can see the material, the size, shape, the end treatment on the culvert, the condition of the culvert, information about the location and about the roadway condition, as well as erosion around the culvert. You can also see the date that it was last inspected. We also have a comments field for anything more specific. And then also, you can see that we have pictures of the culvert. This is a pretty typical-looking culvert. This one had a satisfactory rating, which is about ninety percent of all the culverts that we inspected. And the county uses the data that we collect to track the condition of the culverts over time, which is very helpful for them.
And then Andrew and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the county and the Highway Department. We know culvert inspections is a pretty dry job, and it's getting pretty monotonous and not the most fun thing in the world, but Shannon and the other guys at the Highway Department gave us amazing opportunities to inspect job sites or bridge inspections and give us this opportunity to speak today. So we just want to thank you guys and the county.
Thank you. Are there any questions for these gentlemen?
Great job.
Question for you, and this comes as a loaded question from someone who worked in the Highway Department who no longer is there. She might be right below us in the county courthouse or the county admin building, but she wanted to know if you guys were really listening when she was doing some training with you. So the question is, at what point does a culvert become a bridge?
Well, it's twenty feet or more.
Awesome. Nobody up here that knew that. Thank you for your input.
Commissioner Barth?
I really appreciate the technology that our Highway Department has brought forward, but something that wasn't on your list, I'm wondering if you encountered any critters living in these?
Oh.
I see a nod. Was it skunks, beavers, raccoons, mountain lions?
Shannon wants us to show us this picture of a spider I got. It was pretty nasty. Hold on. But yeah, here you can-
Yeah, we saw several raccoons, a lot of spiders, a couple turtles, and he saw several snakes as well.
Oh, yeah.
The garden spider.
That's a garden spider, yeah.
Yeah, we saw, that was probably like fifty percent of the culverts were just-
Great big spiders.
Those guys sitting there, so.
Do you guys have to crawl in most of these culverts or just look in them?
Look in them, yeah.
Look in them. And is every one of those little red dots a culvert, or are they, so every one of those-
Every one of those red dots is a culvert.
Wow, you'd never know.
Not, all of them are mainline culverts. Some of them are parallel to the road. We did not do those this year. That is for the next iteration of interns.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
I was curious if you actually looked at every single culvert, but it sounds like you looked at.
Yep.
Yeah, wow.
Did you want to come back next year?
If they have an opportunity.
That was a loaded question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
That was really great. Thanks for coming. Good luck on your next year, fall school semester.
Thank you.
Next, we have Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? I have one. I was in Pier this last week on the criminal justice, the mental illness board. I sit on the state oversight board, and some of the, I thought it was very exciting, some of the things that have been going on. So I just wrote a couple of notes down this morning. I'm just going to read through them. I was going to say, I think that's mine, but it's not. We're working on a draft report. I'm not, but the staff is working on a draft report of a review of what's happened over the last year. And one of the, I took a sentence out of that report, and so this is not my wording, but someone else's. "The goal is to treat people with mental illness who come into contact with the criminal justice system more effectively by identifying illness through training, screening, and expanding response and diversion options, and better allocating resources to improve early intervention." They are looking at hiring a state CIT trained coordinator, and that will be sometime this summer. I think their target date was July, so, but I don't think it had happened when I was there yet. They are also working on a training video that will be, that is about half-developed to help to train people in the criminal justice system with crisis intervention training. And that will facilitate, they've increased the amount of training that different individuals can get, but it also, they won't have to travel for their training anymore, and they can do it on their own, on their own time, or staff time, but on their own time, instead of having to travel outside of the office, and improved the amount of training that they got. We saw a short part of one of those videos, and it was very interesting. I think they're doing a great job. Somebody in Minnesota is working on that. Our jail house, jail health screening was started in seven pilot sites, and they're compiling the information on those now. And they said it was interesting to see how the differences between the larger counties and the smaller counties, and how, how you have to adapt to the, to what you have in your environment, which obviously we know, but they said it was, it's just going to make it more difficult, but maybe not just to look at each individual county instead of looking, this is just going to be a statewide change of all systems. Each county is going to have to do it differently. And they talked about SIMS mapping of counties to figure out exactly how they can affect the mental illness in their specific criminal justice system. Pennington County received funding from the state, and they will be starting their mental health court in January. They went through some of the criteria or things that you look for in a mental illness court that are different than the drug and alcohol court, which were interesting. One of the points, just off the top of my head, was that you never graduate from a mental illness court. Like a drug and alcohol court, eventually you would graduate, but with a mental illness court, you're always going to have somebody following you or helping you with your, your drug treatment or for mental illness or other things, or housing. There was a lot of different, it was just very interesting that it's a way different type of court than what we're seeing with drug and alcohol and the veterans' court. They've started competency evaluation training, or, no, excuse me, the competency evaluation, yeah, training. So we didn't have enough people to do the competency evaluations statewide, and we had about six, driving the costs very high. They have now trained about thirty people in the state of South Dakota to do competency evaluations, and they've seen the costs starting to come down on those because of, there's more people available. They were going to pull apart some numbers and say, you know, give, give the state's attorney's office a list of who are the most expensive providers and who are the more reasonable providers, and what were the reasons why some counties were paying more, and is it location or what it is? So they're going to drive down on those costs more. They've also, the competency evaluation time has decreased from four to six months to thirty-seven days. The state goal is to get it down to twenty-one days. They said, we're not quite sure why. They said a twenty-one day, but we'll see, you know, can we continue to drive that down from thirty-seven days to twenty-one days? And the training statewide so far has been, in the CIT crisis intervention training, has been to law enforcement, public defender's offices, state's attorney's office, jail correction offices, judges, and the state prisons, and CSO officers, and they've trained thirty-seven hundred people so far statewide. And so I think just huge things have been happening already. I think when that bill passed, people were skeptical whether anything was going to actually happen, and going to this meeting this last week and, and previous ones, I can see things really have been moving forward, and people are really working hard on it. So that's my report. And then another liaison report, I will be going on Wednesday to the State Association Meeting in Pier to bring our resolutions forward and look at other counties' resolutions. Commissioner Barth?
Commissioner, so just to be clear, changing it, getting it down to thirty-seven days for competency, that's the issue where a defendant needs to be assessed before their trial, right?
Right.
So to those folks out there in the community, people waiting six months to be assessed are spending six months in our jail at a hundred bucks a day or more, and now it's down to thirty-seven days. And that's considerable savings for those of us in the jail business.
Another thing that we brought up that they were going to look into on the competency evaluations was that we were taking people to Human Services, Human Services in Yankton. And so if you look at Pennington County or Harding County, driving somebody to Yankton for their evaluation and then driving them back, we were wasting a tremendous amount of time and effort. And so hopefully, those dollars that will be saved will be put back into other mental health improvements, so.
Good news.
Yeah, good news. Plus, it's not safe for officers to be driving across the state with somebody who's struggling with mental illness, so. Commissioner Karski?
Just want to thank you, Cindy, for the, all the extra time and work you've put in, a lot of effort into the whole mental illness and this competency and JDI, AI, and, and the list is pretty long, and the amount of hours you spent on it have been fantastic. I know here in the last couple of days, I was made aware of a campaign by a local group, you know, about who we have in jail and mental illness and that type of thing. And I have to say that in my year and a half on the county commission now, I've learned more about mental illness than I ever thought I cared to, kind of like bathrooms in a jail, I guess. It's amazing what you pick up on, but what I have to say is that between our sheriff, our public defender, our state's attorney, our city police department, the hospitals, the healthcare facilities, mental health facilities, the county commission, everybody's on board with making sure that the right people are in jail.
Yeah.
And we, we don't put people in jail because they have a mental illness. We, we want to take care of them the right way, and I think it's recognized nationally because Minnehaha County is one of the leaders when it comes to a lot of these initiatives with the work of Aaron Surska and our triage committee and the just number of people that are really focused on getting this done properly. And we're trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. Those were good comments. Additional comments? Additional reports? Okay. Are there any, that's my paper here. Any new business? Any old business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Go to the fair. Get off the couch and go to the Sioux Empire Fair.
Thanks, Jeff.
If I could, I did go to the fair yesterday. I was a volunteer, and I lost my volunteer pass to get in, and I got to the fair fully expecting to pay the admittance, and when I got there, it said, if you're a veteran, you get in free. So if you're a veteran, go to the fair. You get in free with a guest. So just, if you have the veteran sticker on your driver's license, just one more reason